The meet and discuss voting board meeting of the Amherst Area School District is held on Wednesday, January 12th, 2022. This meeting is being held to take action that has come before the Board. All meetings have been advertised to permit legislative action as necessary. Can we have the following three Economy Elementary students up to do the flag salute, please? So that would be Alyssa Walker, Abigail Howell, and Alex Pompeo. Can everyone please rise? You guys can start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and taking part in that. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It may or may not be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Seifis?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Fitzco?
Here.
Mr. Keber?
Here.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Zachi?
Here.
Mrs. Remasco?
Here.
Nine present.
Can I have the sunshine law, please?
The Board of School Directors held executive session on Wednesday, January 12th to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and other confidentiality laws, litigation or threatened litigation matters.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition and presentation. So at this point, the Board of School Directors would like to recognize Mrs. Orth and the high school art students for their work on the Bridger Hall of Honor mural. Can anybody that's present here tonight that have to do with that, please come forward? Do you have students here? That's okay. These are the senior leads. These are the seniors, all right? Can you just tell everybody a little bit about?
Sure. Yeah, so the mural we made, I learned how to make these murals the year Savannah was in eighth grade, so, 2012, with Laura Jean McLaughlin. She's an artist, she owns Clay Pen, and she's an artist who works with Pittsburgh Center for the Arts, who we've had a beautiful partnership with for years. And they come almost every year for a very low fee to me that I can fundraise with artist residencies. So that's where I learned that skill. And I just brought it to us because we needed to honor the Hall of Honor. So we did it, and it took about four weeks, I'd say, three or four weeks. They did so good, I'm so proud of them. It's hard to get them out at seven o'clock on a nine o'clock weekday, they're busy. But they did a great job, and I'll do anything I ask of them in school. So we'll get a nice photo op with them during the school day. And they rocked it. I think it looks really beautiful, and Mike has did it from the ground up. So they drew it and did everything.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and for all the work that you and your students put into that project. That's such a great accomplishment. Do you want to read the senior leads, or do you want?
Sure. Yeah, I can. So, let me see your leads, and just so everybody knows, we're doing another mural. It's our first outdoor mural. It will be displayed at the Chamber of Commerce. So we'll be doing that, and I will have an additional senior lead, also, too. So the senior leads for the Hall of Honor were Brandon Strebb, Jayden Kokinar, Haley Ho, Jericho Schmidt, and Danielle Carpenter. And we'll also add Billy Nickel to that list for the next mural. Okay?
Thank you very much. Mrs. Remasco. Kelly, Mrs. Remasco, before Jamie walks away, I just wanted to thank her. She was really committed to the Bridger Hall of Honor project over a year ago. And we collaborated a year ago on it, and she embraced it with excitement and creativity along with her students. And I'm proud to say that you're born and raised a Bridger, as most of you probably know. And she puts a lot of heart and soul into it, and she navigated through the pandemic to put this design together and make it exactly what it is today. So, thank you, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please thank your students from all of us as well.
I will.
Excellent job, thank you. So we will now move on to the audit presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's hard to follow up, Art. So you should have updated the audit report there. In addition, we sort of prepared a one-page summary of some of the results that were within the report itself that we thought was important to bring out and point out to the Board. So just to go through some of that information on the one sheet, the first letter you're going to see in the financial statements is our independent audit report. So that report is an unmodified opinion to the state's financial statements were compared in, were compared to generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. The statement was prepared presented in all material respects and of course, with generally accepted accounting principles. So there's no modifications to the particular opinion there. Now, within governmental accounting, and I think some of you probably are familiar with the financial statements from prior years, but in governmental accounting, there's actually two sets of financial statements under two different bases of accounting. One is only governmental financial statements, which is the full overall basis of accounting. So those statements, which are example one and two of your financial reporting, include all your assets, all your liabilities, your debt, your fixed assets, and accumulation depreciation, net pension liability, OPEB liabilities, and all those different items within there. So when you look at that statement, you're going to see a large negative net position. That's because of the pension liabilities and the other liabilities that you have that are in there. Now, you don't budget on that basis, you don't see financial statements on a monthly basis on that basis. And so we're not really going to look at those, we'll touch on some items that are in there and include those, but we'll really concentrate on and look at the fund financial statements, which is what you see each month when you're presented with financial information from the business office. So going to that, so the first statement we would look at would be the balance sheet and the page numbers there, relate to the page numbers within your audit report. So I'm sure you want to go back and verify all that tonight when you get home. But the, the school has actually two different funds, governmental funds, general funds. So your fund balance is broken into two categories, non-spendable and unassigned. The non-spendable represents prepaid health insurance, so health insurance paid in June, that is actually for the next month. Your unassigned fund balance at the end of June 30, 2021, is $711,630. Now, when we look at that as a percentage to your budget of expenditures, it's only 1.4%. We'll look at on the next page as to where you started the year and where you wound up the year, in terms of your fund balance. So the other fund that you do have is the capital project fund. So that's, fund balance in there is, at the end of the year, is $2,847,000. So that's committed for obviously capital projects in the future. So for the general fund, you're stating a revenue, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this shows your total revenues for the year, $49,171,000. Expenditures, $49,579. Then you have some other financing sources, which were two transfers or sell assets in the year of $17,510. So your fund balance changed, it actually decreased by $390,539. Now, when we go back and look and say, okay, what did the school anticipate to use for fund balance, your actual budgeted fund balance deficit is going to be $2.5 million. Okay? So that's what you anticipated and used to your fund balance and balance your budget. You only used $390,000. When you look at the budget, the actual, we can see where those variances came in. So in the financial statements, in the background, the required supplementary information, there's schedules in there that show the budget, the actual. So it shows your original budget, the adjusted budget for, with any approved budget transfers, the actual revenues and expenditure broken down by various categories, and then the variance. So when we look at that on there, your total revenues came in over budget by $27,000. Now, there's a lot of variances up and down, but overall, that's where you wound up at, which as you can see is less than half a percent. So on that side there. Now, for your expenditures, your expenditures also came in under budget, or came in under budget by significant number, $2,148,000, or 4.25%. And it was fortunate that you were able to cut your expenditures down below what you anticipated in the budget, because it would have been a fund balance deficit at the end of June 30, 2021. So, like I said, when you anticipate your budget, you anticipate using 2.5 million of your fund balance. The beginning fund balance wasn't that large to begin with to use that much. So I think when I, you know, recognized, I think the district went in and did start making some budget cuts and some limiting spending to bring those expenditures in under budget to minimize your deficit for the year. Now, when we look at the revenues, you can see the various sources, there's local, state, federal. As expected, local sources are the largest, 53.8% of your total revenues. And of that amount, 80% of those revenues, local sources are coming from your real estate tax. Some of the other large revenues would be some of our income taxes, real estate transfer taxes. But like I said, 80% of that is coming from your real estate taxes that are assessed each year. State sources, 42%, and then federal for this year is a little higher than what you would normally expect due to the various COVID funding money the districts have received. So you have 3.5% there. Then your expenditures are broken down into those categories, as you can see, instruction. As expected, would be the largest one, which would be your revenue instruction, special ed, vocational ed, and those types of programs. So that's 61.3%. Support services, 25%, and then non-instructional, small, 1.6%. Then your debt service, so your cost of your debt service for the year, pay your principal interest on the asset in the debt, 12.1% of your expenditures are for debt service. Like I said, the other fund you have is capital projects. As you can see, in 2021, very minimal revenues or expenditures in there, $100,000. So that fund balance really didn't change much from last year to this year in that fund. Then the other fund you have is the food service fund. So the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in that position are reported on page 28 in the statements there. Now, what we're reporting here, as I mentioned earlier, there's net pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liability. That's actually allocated between the governmental activities and also the food service. So in the financial statement itself, that statement includes those adjustments. These are numbers without that, which is how you would only look at your food service funds as your basic revenues and expenses. As you can see, your deficit for last year was $315,000. This year is a little bit better, $246,000 in the food service fund, meaning that your revenues aren't coming in their expenses by that amount. Now, the last two years have been a bit of an aberration, to say the least, in terms of students in school, what you've been able to serve, you know, how many kids are in school, whether it's accurate, and those kinds of things. So those numbers are somewhat skewed, but at the same time, I think it's definitely a fund that we need to keep or take a look at, and if you and I want to ensure that that deficit there is not building up too much, because there's not going to be a way for that fund to reimburse, repay the general fund. Because basically, the only way that fund's arriving from general funds, is fancy monies to them, within expectation for those who come back, those funds that come back. So I think that's why it's important to maintain and hide that fund and ensure that that's not increasing beyond what it's going to be capable of paying. Because if not, then the asset piece that's sitting in the general fund due from the food service is really not going to be realized. And that's going to affect your fund balance at some point in time potentially. So something else to consider. So that's basically the statements themselves, just the summary there. The next section of the foot, that's in the financial statements. So they go on for 50 days, probably, before you're putting into the details of all of them. Just want to point out a couple of items that we touched on earlier, which was a big item, is the net pension liability. So as part of being in PESR, PESR is a multi-important cost-sharing pension plan, meaning that everybody's sharing in all the liabilities and all the costs and the expenses there. So as part of that, the net pension liability basically is the difference between the assets in that PESR plan, less what the accrued liability is as determined by the actual. So your share at the end of June of 2021 is $58 million. Your share is only 0.1181% of the total plan itself. So that proportion is determined based upon your contributions of Amherst voters compared to the total contributions of all the members in that plan. So as you can see, that liability increased, your share, your percentage increased very slightly, with the total liability of a whole PESR plan increased by $2 million for the year. So that's part of that is. So also, you also have another post-employment benefit plan through the district, meaning that you provide retirees with some health insurance on a limited basis after they retire. So there's technically a liability as to what the cost of that is, so the actual risk calculating that liability and coming up with $1,238,000 for the cost of those benefits that you provide in various contracts, with the various party needs you have. Also, in PESR, there's a piece for post-employment benefits in that plan also, where retirees are provided $1,200 a year to be used towards their health insurance as part of the retirement. So that is a liability associated with that, and you can see your share is $2.5 million at the end of June of last year, 2021. So in terms of your debt that you've actually issued, you do have some general allocation of bonds. So the total outstanding of your total bonds at the end of June is $61,365. So in 2021, you did issue $13 million in new debts, and the purpose of that debt was to refund the fees other debt that you had already had outstanding. So you had issued $13 million in bonds, paid off $12,410,000 in bonds. The purpose of that was to reduce your total debt service, paying it over the next 15 years, over the life of that debt. Your savings was just a little over $600,000. So there was no additional funding received by the district, but your debt payment was refunded. So even though it looks like you issued more bonds than paid off, the total principal interest over the life of those has lasted, so that's the purpose of the fees. Then you actually paid in principal during the year of the debt, $3,800,000. So the other debt, there's small capital, which is outstanding of about $9,300. So the last section in the financial statement is the single audit section. That section is required, because the district doesn't spend over $750,000 in federal funds. And as part of that, we're required to perform additional audit procedures, control compliance procedures over certain of the expenditures of the federal expenditures. The program that we selected in 2021 was the nutrition cluster, or the school lunch or breakfast program. As you can see, your total federal expenditures were $2,921,000, which was significantly higher than what you've been in the prior year, mainly a result of the additional COVID-19 funding that you had received and expended in 2021 through the SRS funds, one and two. I don't think you spent any rest of your free money in 2021. There was also some other funding from, that's the commission on primary delinquency as the master agency for some other COVID funding. So you can see that fund that was expended and received, $845,000 more per year. And the result of the single audit section of the testing that we did over the nutrition cluster, basically, the results are on that page there, named three, but to summarize that, there was no material non-compliance that we noted, no material weaknesses in terms of control of that nutrition cluster, and we do not report any significant deficiencies in control of that nutrition program that we tested. So overall, there's no findings and no issues to resolve in terms of the federal problems itself, for that part of the test. So that's a quick summary of the, some of the information over there, I suppose I could go through eight days' report, but that's sort of where you are, where you started the year, where you wound up the year for 6321. Yeah, if there's any questions, we're glad to answer anything, or if there's questions at home later, Beth Hanner, Dr. Maslow, you can get a hold of me and answer that one time if you can.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to work for the Amherst School.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank my friend, too, who came in. As a new person, we were in the middle of the audit, so she, she's still here, it's a good thing, so we didn't go out of place.
At this time, Mr. Residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, Board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the residents comment some questions or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Amherst Area School District under old new business at the end of the meeting.
... As a lawyer and a taxpayer, it is this confirmed to me, there are Board members and charging committees to provide critical areas where it's impacted the liability issues, such as personnel, who are personally named and involved in litigation that led to massive financial liability across the district that spawned additional litigation that added additional costs and months to the district. Seeing that someone wanted to see the manager hanging from the bridge, now he's turned about metal detectors, and another individual who was involved in fixing the output of the grievance, and referencing the manager as the C-word, is simply repugnant. See that person now having personnel. I encourage all the Board members to quickly learn about liability, and to contact me on all of your texts. You know, amazing solicitor, listen to her, because she will give her best advice to you, like you've already made decisions that can be done in very, very dangerous hole. Part of the issue of negligence is that you have duty. You all have duty. You also all have notice. That logs into this public record, is easily able to be accessed via a research, and you need to see the calendar, but who is now on this list? The liability falls to all of you, and President of this district will hold your capital.
Does anyone have a Amherst follow-up on that? Every resident is still really willing to have a little, so I don't know about that. As far as any litigation, we didn't find that all online, because we've already all been there, so anyone can look it up, it's pretty public knowledge. Couple questions in regards to the agenda. The contract between Prevention Network, I'm just curious, if we are looking only on, are we looking going through these on case by case? Or are we just going on the, how, like, for your... Oh my gosh, it's been a long day. Sorry, guys, let me come here. For the attendance, okay? For whatever we are counting these attendance, I get a call every day, for this part, because I'm so ranky. Every day I get a phone call saying my son's in school, and every day he's in school. I have to deal with this all the time, all the time. He does go to bus stop, and I've been told that, you know, there's an issue with, because riding the bus, or the... I move on through millions and millions of scenarios, and I've addressed it numerous times. It still happens regardless every day. My point is, what I'm making is, is looking on paper like he's not there, when in fact he is. We're to the point where he just has to take pictures of him signing in, because it's showing him on air. What I'm saying is, I don't know if we really have an attendance problem as big as we do, or whether maybe we should go into them more on that. Second of all, someone can zone up, unless I knew you were resigning, if someone does based on that. And number three, can we also, I don't know if there's any legalities on this one, but these are another way to get the public hearings announced, because apparently, the only way it was, was on the website, but whenever you pull it up, on the, like, for instance, my phone, I pull mine up on my phone, I see two agendas right off of that, so automatically, I think that's what that is. Right after that, it was a JROTC, something or other. So I didn't scroll any further, because I'm used to that, only to find out that there was another agenda under there. So I don't know of that anymore, so I'm just pointing that out for this far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? And I will, I will address some of those later on, I actually had a whole thing to address most of that, but anything about the Prevention Network that you want to see, too?
The only thing I'll say about Prevention Network and that contract, some of the SRS funds are specifically tied and don't give you a lot of flexibility, because they are supposed to be used for certain, certain resources. And in this case, in that given grant, one of the things that was decided in talking out of the opportunities that we have, we couldn't offset, was to try to provide some additional mental health and student assistance programs for attendance and those types of things, for our SAP program focused on attendance. And that was something that they felt was increased in part to folks coming back from COVID, from hybrid back to COVID. So that was an earmark for that, not something that probably will be here long-term, but for at least this year's grant. So I appreciate your feedback on that, thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Kehoe, would you please, under the committee reports, read through the steering and rules items?
Okay, I have item number one. I'd like to make a motion to accept items number one as presented this evening. It is policy 610, purchases subject to bid slash quotation. It is to waive the second and third readings. It is actually to update a missed policy in the past. The old policy numbers were $4,000 and $10,000. The current suggested by PSBA is $21,900. Anything over that has to go out to bid. So it's just to update the policy, because it was missed.
And 11-8, I was just saying, yeah, 11-8.
So there's a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under Education and Technology, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, under Education and Technology, we are going to discuss Prevention Network. It is recommended to approve the contract between the Amherst Area School District and Prevention Network for the remainder of the 21-22 school year to provide student assistance programming the SAP support for attendance. The amount for one day per week for January to June is $5,250. The funding is secured by the EASRs and TSI, 2.5% set aside by the grant. Any discussion?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Keber?
Yes, Madam President, I have one item for consideration tonight. It is recommended to accept a proposal from the Granger for the purchase of two or three metal detectors for the school district, specifically the middle school, in the amount not to exceed $11,500.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have two quick questions. Number one, where is the money coming from to pay for that? And do we need three? And the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because at the high school, we only have two. And from our meeting the other day, Mr. King said there's like 804 students here, and there's only like 500 at the middle school.
Yeah, 520.
Yeah, so do we really need three? I know they come in from two separate, the front and the back of the building.
So that was the initial thought process, was that because there are two different entrances, that you would put two at the bus entrance and one at the entrance where the cars drop off and where students are dropped off? I do believe that they are trying to figure out a way in which we could possibly make two work. two work. If we can get three for that amount, um, it could be tried out at the middle school is kind of the thought process. And if they notice that they do not need three, then we could possibly move that third one down to the high school if there is a need at the high school level. So that's why we're saying school district, you know, as to be used at the middle school right now. But if we, I mean, if we want to amend that motion to two, then we can certainly do that. I think the important part is to get, make sure the metal detectors get into that building.
I missed, did you say there was a need at the high school? They feel there is a need?
I just said in the case that there would be a need for an extra one, we would have that one available if we had the three that we purchased.
As far as specifically where that is going to come from?
To answer, I mean, the only thing I can answer that is, there'll be a specific account that it will be registered, but to be honest, obviously that wasn't budgeted into this year's budget. She'll, she will purchase that out of the appropriate account and look if we come in under somewhere else, we might be able to do a journal entry over. But to be transparent, it wasn't, as we know, it was not budgeted.
Or can I ask, since we haven't been paying this SRO, is there money left from that salary?
Uh, that, that's definitely a good point. We're in year two of a grant on that, um, so we get about half the money, about thirty thousand to pay for that out of the grant. So I guess to, to answer that question, um, there probably would be some money left over to, to journal entry that over. I'm not saying or in other areas too. I, I just was saying that it wasn't specifically budgeted for as we know, but we could look at other areas where we come in. That may be a place where it comes up, we can come in under as well as other places.
I have one other question. We have a survey out right now to the public, parents, asking their opinion of a, um, metal detector at the middle school. Is this a little bit premature seeing that we haven't really seen those results yet and getting the public's input?
So as of today, um, I did look into that and I asked for some feedback as far as our survey results. That survey closes tomorrow, so we are a day before the end of the survey, but at this point, ninety-five percent of the people that have responded, have responded that yes, they are in support of the metal detectors at the middle school. So I believe that although we are one day in advance of the end of that survey, that we are looking at a very positive outlook on having the metal detectors placed up at that middle school.
Any other questions, discussion?
I'm not saying don't buy them. What I'm saying is, can we get by with two?
I, I think that that's a reasonable suggestion. Do you want to make a amendment to the motion?
Well, the only reason why I'm asking, because in the motion, it says two or three. Does it really need an amendment?
I, I guess we just need clarification from the board. I mean, you just want to say, I don't think we need to, I don't know, I defer to the solicitor on that, but if you just say publicly now, we're going to vote it through and you're only going to order two, that's fine. We put two or three because at the time we wanted it on the agenda for remains of discussion and so people knew. And there were still some going back and forth with the principals and I know the board, you know, looking for some feedback as to whether or not they wanted two or three. So I defer to the solicitor as whether or not you have to amend it or you could just say, just buy two.
I mean, I, I believe that, that either the, I mean, you could do it either way, but if the consensus of the board is to start with two and you direct that as, as commentary in association with the motion as presented, then that would be your directive or expectation of, of the administration moving forward, at least in the most initial phases.
Ma- Madam President?
Yes.
Has the, the building staff or leadership been consulted on what they feel they need and what they feel they're able to staff and use in a workable way? What has been their feedback?
So the feedback so far, um, from the principal, when we had our Act forty-four Safety Committee, uh, the feedback from the principal was that he had an overwhelming support from the teachers to be able to staff those metal detectors regardless of how many there were. Um, so we do have that support of teachers that are willing to help out with that. Uh, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Just if they feel like they need two versus three, or, or what did they feel that they need to, to properly equip their entrances?
So in that initial meeting, they asked for three because of the, the two different entrances. Um, you know, in further discussion, I think that Principal Hurd has found a way that he could possibly manage with two. This year might be difficult because of the way that the bus routes and the car, you know, how parents are expected to drop off, walkers, things like that. So it might be a little bit difficult, but I think it's certainly something that we could take into consideration, at least to start out with two. But the recommendation in the initial meeting was three.
So I just want to be, you know, just add this for the, is it the money we talking about? Because if we can get twenty of them for eleven thousand five hundred, let's do that. Or is, or is it the quantity? Like, I'm just confused on what is, what is the discrepancy here? If we're okay with eleven thousand five hundred, let's get as many as we can because it's a good thing. Ninety-five percent of the public believe that's the, you know, that's the case. So I'll just, I guess I'm asking for clarification on it. Is it the budget? Should we shrink it, uh, to make sure it's only two? Or we good at eleven thousand five hundred and get as many as we can?
So what I would, I would just say to that, just for your discussion, as you finish answering that question, is, is that, you know, we've, we've looked at ones and it appears that, um, you're most likely, you know, prices change, but you most likely to get one similar to the one, I won't say the exact same, similar to the ones that we've been using here, you will, you will be able to probably get three underneath that amount and definitely two. So it also comes down to making sure, I mean, there was a tentative date that they said they may be able to be delivered, um, if we order a few days ago towards the end of January. And so that's the other thing, sometimes things are on backorder, this or that. So kind of why I gave a little bit more leeway is that there was something, because I know you want it here as soon as you can. So if a model can get here quicker, that was a little more expensive, or there was extra delivery charge to be able to get it here sooner, uh, just with regards to shortages, I guess not particular to these, but everything, um, most everything. I just figured there would be a little bit of leeway on that. So to answer your question, from our research as it stands, which is always subject to change, you probably could get three, very close to three underneath, or I don't think you would be able to get to the four, if you mind. To answer your question.
Thank you.
And just in, in full transparency, the reason why we decided to add this to the agenda for tonight, although we did ask the question on the survey and it is the day before the survey ends, um, it's something that has been brought up time and time again as a concern. And if we, when we looked at the shipping date, like you talked about earlier, the shipment date will get pushed back week after week if we keep pushing it. And so it did make sense to add it to the agenda, but as far as the number, we left it as two or three dependent upon the exact price once you include shipping and things like that. So what, what is the consensus of the board as far as how we would like to proceed? Are we, are we good with the two or two to three? Do we, do we need to make a motion to amend?
I agree with it staying at the two to three versus just two.
Get what you can.
Yeah.
For the amount. I don't think it's going to make a lot of a difference between two and three. That would be my, that would be my suggestion.
To understand what was just stated, just to restate it, it would mean if you could get three for less than eleven thousand five hundred, get three. That's how I understood that.
That is correct.
Anybody else have any comments on that before we vote? Do we have a motion?
Yep. You have a motion in a second.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under Personnel, Mrs. Smith, please.
Sure. Five items under Personnel this evening. Number one, being a professional employee, is recommended to hire Sarah Burns at the salary that is listed, master step one, per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Association Agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses from current former employers and Act one sixty-eight screening. Number two is an MC JROTC Senior Military Instructor. It's recommended to approve the employment agreement for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for the position of Senior Military Instructor of the Ambridge Area Marine Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps with Lieutenant Colonel Jeffrey Tissac at the salary listed, effective on or above February first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. The official start date will be determined pending the valid, uh, PA teaching certificate, current clearances, and all the other things listed. Final agreement pending solicitor review. The district will be reimbursed half of the salary by the United States Marines, just a point of information. Number three is for the twenty-one, twenty-two spring coaches. There are two listed, one being for track, the other one being for middle school softball. And the amounts are also listed under stipend. Number four is a two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three fall coaches. We are approving, um, designated fall coaching positions. We have a girls soccer coach at the stipend listed. And number five, there's a pair of professionals. It's recommended to ratify the following individuals as paraprofessionals as per the Ambridge Area Education Support Professional Association, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers and Act one sixty-eight screening with the two people listed below, one being at Highland Elementary and the other at Economy Elementary. That's all I have.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
I will recuse myself from one and yes on two to five.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we did add a few things to the agenda moving forward. There's a, um, President's address, so just so you see that on there, there's just a couple of things that I may mention here and it's not, might not be every meeting, but here and there, there might be some things to mention. And then also, we are adding back the old and new business at the meet and discuss meeting and the voting meeting, so you'll have a chance at the end of every meeting to discuss anything that's not agenda related, um, at both meetings each month. So just so that you're aware of those changes on there. Desiree, to your question earlier, so at December's voting meeting, Mrs. Fisher did resign from the board. Um, at that time, we did not make any action to accept her resignation. So as such, we scheduled and publicly adv- advertised a meeting to accept her resignation a week or so later. Approximately eleven o'clock the night before, we received notification from Mrs. Fisher that she was rescinding her resignation. And so Mrs. Fisher is continuing on the board from this point forward. So that's an answer to your question.
Kelly, or Mrs. Remasco, may I just?
Sure.
I'll, you know, answer back to that, right? Um, just so, so we're clear, I, I wanted to publicly thank and, and maybe help you to understand, um, that I had several people reach out to me personally and supported me staying on the board. It affected me emotionally mentally and I was very moved and honored by that. While I still morally and ethically stand by my previous concerns at the December meeting, I'm humbled and honored by the continued support. And I'll continue to give my very best to the children of this community because first and foremost, they will always be my top priority, along with the entire Ambridge community. And I look forward to working with this board and the report for the betterment of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Remasco, I just want to add something else. And I know things change, but in the past, when we call like a special meeting, usually everybody checks their calendar. And my only thing is, I, I know most of all of you live here, grew up here, all your relatives are here. Mine are not. I had already made plans, like in June, and my family's five states away. So I couldn't guarantee where I was going to be if I was going to have internet access at that point for that meeting. So we kind of had to call off the plans for that. And I just, just going forward, can we just, if we have to schedule a special meeting, can we just kind of like check everybody's calendar first?
Absolutely, we can definitely do that. I think that, you know, the, the resignation put us in a very difficult spot because of the holiday season. There's not a whole lot of, you know, we only have thirty days to fill an open seat. And with respect to everybody in the public, I think last time, we had those vacancies, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of time to get applications, right? We had to move very quickly from November to December. So understanding the holiday break, we weren't quite sure what to do with that information, realized that we needed to take that time to give to the public so that they have the chance to put out their letters with intent to, you know, be on the school board or have the chance to be on the school board. So it was more of a timing thing. I know that it was probably an inconvenience and didn't end up being an inconvenience because we didn't have, have to have the meeting, but yes, absolutely. Okay, so one other thing I just wanted to mention, our teachers and our administrators right now are working extremely hard to keep our kids in school. And I just wanted to take a second, um, on behalf of the board to thank them for all their hard work and time that they're putting in, all the staff at all the schools. It is what seems to be, from the outside perspective, I'm not in the building every day, um, a very tight-knit group of teachers, staff, administrators that are really trying to support our kids in every way possible and keep them here. And I just wanted to take a second to thank them for doing that. Um, it's a, it's a difficult time and it's, you know, it's just much appreciated, so I wanted to take a second to do that. Also, one other thing, as far as board committees go, so we did do a reorganization of the board committees. I would like, or prefer to, rather than have nine board committees, have five, so that moving forward, we could have actual committee meetings where those committee chair people are actually involved in building the agenda and making suggestions. We can have parents on those committees, we can have, you know, teachers, administrators, whatever, on those committees moving forward. So some of them made a little bit more sense to, to combine. They will spell the same names, they just will be combined and therefore met appropriately. So under Personnel, Labor Relations, that would be combined and Personnel and Salary and Labor Relations being combined. And, um, after further discussion, before I go forward, Mrs. Fisher, I know you had, um, not preferred to have a committee last time, I'm assuming that was due to the resignation. Would you like to be part of a committee at this point?
Sure.
Okay. So under Personnel and Labor Relations, uh, it would be Mr. Seifus and Mrs. Smith. Then we would be combining Steering and Roles and Legislative, and that would be Mrs. Kehoe and Mrs. Fisher.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
For the minutes in the notes, when you're done with this, will you, you will send these to us so that we can make sure we updated correctly? I just don't want to get in the wrong.
Absolutely. Athletics and PR, Public Relations, would be Mr. Zachi and Mrs. Fitzco. Um, Education and Technology, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Zachi. Finance and Budget and Building and Grounds would be Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Keber. Do I need to mention the two other committees we have? Health and Safety, okay. So we also have the Health and Safety Committee, which is considered kind of like an ad hoc committee. That's, um, myself, Mrs. Fitzco, Mrs. Fisher, and Mrs. Kehoe. And then the Act forty-four School Safety Committee is Mrs., myself, Mr. Seifus, and Mr. Zachi. One other comment, surveys, if you have not filled out surveys yet, if you have been emailed that link, if you could please take the time to do that sometime before tomorrow, that would be much appreciated. We really are looking forward to reading that feedback. So if you could take the time to do that, that would be great. That's all I have. So on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, uh, for my report, I would like our, our, our Health and Safety Committee met yesterday, so I'm going to have a PowerPoint pulled up and I'd like to go over what was discussed there. That's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Well, while we're waiting, the committee did gain some additional members, and some folks left, and we gained some additional members made up of community members, parents, teachers, administration, board members, and we did gather yesterday to me and to kind of discuss our current health and safety plan and get an update. So as I said, we met yesterday. Okay. So a couple items that came out of actual action items from the committee that were considered and recommendations went to a vote of those who were able to attend. One item that came up was considering that when 4% of a building's students and staff has positive in a rolling 14-day window, the building would mask until it came back under 3%. In addition, the tech department would set up a dashboard of all positive cases by building by 3:00 p.m. each day. As I understand this, that would be the motion to be considered, but before I go to the next slide, as I understand that, just as a little bit of more information. So keep in mind that when we're looking at whether or not we let the health department know and make decisions as to whether or not we would close the building currently, it is on a 14-day average, and it does look at a percentage of 5%, but the total populations of students and staff in the building. However, it goes by those cases as it stands right now, not just that are positive, but that were symptomatic in school. So that is a difference. This is looking at just sheer number of positive cases that we would have in a 14-day window. This is the recommendation. The committee did take that to a vote, and then, so I'm clear, we would look at that at 3:00 p.m., we would create a dashboard to show that, and then hit 4% that given building, then if this were to go through, first of all, we need to be added to next week's agenda for discussion by the board for consideration of public comment, and if that was the case and it were to go through, then we would mask until it went back down to 3% of the building. Out of the 24 members that were attending, you could see the 23 voted yes for this and one chose to abstain. Another issue that came up from the committee was reopening the water fountains in all buildings. Except, right now, as we know, it's not that our students don't have water, it's that we give them either bottles of water, they bring water bottles in, and they fill those in conjunction with trying to adhere to safety protocols with COVID-19. This did take it to a vote, 17 voted yes, and six voted no. So this would be a recommendation. Another one that would be considered by the board, they would like to see that on the agenda for the following. This one here, if you look at our current safety plan, in the very beginning of it, it says that pretty much we would adhere to the CDC guidelines, but as it went through the plan at some point, I, I kind of vindicated that, you know, these, and I've said this many times, that the language in around quarantine and isolation, which I've said in the previous meeting, since the previous meetings until today, it's probably changed at least two times. So it's constantly changing. What was listed in there right now on the website goes back to the most recent up-to-date information that we had at the time of the mat and board approval, which really talked about being able to test on day five, six, and seven and those types of things. I didn't really ever think we needed to change it because in the beginning of the plan, it did talk about the fact that we would follow CDC guidelines. So at this point, what I think we should do is, if we make adjustments to the plan and talk about the committee, and the committee was all in favor, that we should just take out that language about testing on day five, six, or seven, which is not accurate anymore, and just replace that with, we're going to follow CDC guidelines as they seem to change through. So that would also be on the agenda and updated for your consideration, if you put on the agenda and then update it in the plan. A little bit about the most recent, because as I said at the last meeting, things do change constantly, and since our last meeting, it's changed twice. Just to kind of go over where we stand, because I know some people wanted this, I hesitate to, again, put that out of any, anywhere official because it could change tomorrow. Often, to be honest with you, at least the last couple times, it's changed Friday as, as we're walking out, so that's just a piece of information. For persons who come into close contact with someone with COVID-19 and are in one of the following groups, they do not need to quarantine. Persons who are 18 years or older and have received all recommended vaccine doses, including boosters and additional primary shots for some compromised individuals. Persons who are 5'17" and have completed the primary season, excuse me, series of COVID-19 vaccines. Persons who have inferred COVID-19 within the last 90 days and has diagnosed by a viral test. These people who do not need to quarantine should still wear a well-fitting mask around others for 10 days from the date of the last close contact with somebody with COVID-19, and that date of last contact is considered day zero. Additionally, it is recommended that anyone exposed to COVID-19 should get tested at least five days after the last contact, close contact with someone with COVID-19. If that test is positive, or the person does develop symptoms related to COVID-19, they should follow the regular recommendations with the isolation selection rule, which we have cases on the cloud. See here. Now, people who do need to quarantine as of 1/7/22, persons aged 18 or older, completed the primary series of the recommended vaccine, but have not received a recommended booster, if you're vaccinated or you haven't had the booster, you do have to quarantine. Persons who received a single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, completed the primary season series over two months ago, and have not received a recommended booster shot. Persons who are not vaccinated or have not completed a primary vaccine series, if you're not vaccinated yet. Those people should quarantine at home and away from other people for at least five days, day zero through day five, after the last contact with a person who has had COVID-19, and wear a well-fitted mask around others at home, where if possible. Additionally, these people should monitor for symptoms, including fever of 104 or greater. If the symptoms develop, they should be tested immediately and isolated until the results are received. If the test is positive, the person should isolate. So those are the updates of today. Who knows what Friday may bring? Maybe they will stay consistent for a while, but that's where we are at. So I will take questions from the board and then ultimately see if the Board of Education wants to make this a voting item for next week, and then it would be placed on the agenda and folks would be able to comment, give their thoughts from the public, ultimately resulting in whether you want to vote on one, two, or none of these items for that matter. And then we would make those following changes. A couple last comments before I take the questions. One thing we do need to think about, for you to think about, is if we did pass that one in regards to wearing masks at local control, we would have to think about how we may handle some folks who, who may not want to do that, okay, at the local level. That's one thing for you to consider. I think the other thing to keep in mind and to consider will be the difference between the dashboard and this procedure, looking at positive cases in a 14-day rolling average, and make sure it's clear to everyone and to yourselves that we only are using cases where folks are symptomatic when we're calling the Department of Health once we get close to the 5% number to shut a building down, if that makes sense. Those are two things I kind of just wanted to reiterate to all of you as you're in the room. So at this given point, I will obviously open it up to any questions from the board that you have, and I will do my best to try to answer.
Dr. Pescarel, I think it's important for everybody to understand, the public to understand, that any discussion that we have on this subject is, is solely intended for the purposes of keeping our buildings open and keeping our kids in school. It's not for the intention of wearing masks or unmasking. It's not a political discussion, but I think all of our intent, we've had enough discussion. Our intent is to keep our kids in school, keep our teachers healthy, and, and stay open. We, we've learned the hard way that doing it the other way isn't ideal. I do have a couple questions, though, and we're all learning, right? So I don't expect us to have necessarily the answer, but I think we need to think through what would be the burden of proof that we are willing to accept from the families as a, as a required test. I guess the evolution, in my mind, the evolution of at-home testing, I've already seen it at work, they send me pictures, and I don't really know, I could Google a picture, and we, we did that exercise at work, you know? So what, what, what burden of proof are we asking the family for? Have we thought that through? And, and if not, then maybe we should think that through.
I mean, obviously, that you as board members would be able to make that decision. I could tell you what my recommendation would be. Currently, what we do is we do, if somebody says that they tested positive on a home test, we do treat that in an abundance of caution as a positive test in the sense that we ask them to go out and get an actual test, you know, from a testing site, and we would be proactive in looking at quarantining folks. However, we don't count that number in our list until we get from an actual testing site, and right now, there seems to be no, no instances where you could test out of anything, but if that did come to matter, I would not recommend using home tests to test out of the quarantine.
And right now, it sounded like you're, you're test positive, you're not lending that towards home testing either, at this, at least at this point. We're, we're assuming, we're assuming positive.
Positive on the home test would not be accounting in the numbers, however, if we remain aware of that, we do ask persons like to get another test, and we do look into, and Mrs. Fisher, we do look into quarantining folks that are close contacts in abundance of caution.
We follow the same regulations with the, with the home test, but we do not count it. So that way, it wouldn't count as their baseline for their 90 days, because they, you know, once you have a positive test, you're quarantined free for 90 days.
Other questions?
Yeah, I think, I think this is a moving target. You know, it's, it's all over the news that, number one, there's 500 million tests going out that are home tests, there is not availability in emergency rooms right now, so there's a lot of obstacles, and unless you got like 200 bucks to go get a PCR test or, or, you know, the other version, it's going to, it's going to be tough. So I just, I'm a little cautious of that statistic on the dashboard just because of a lack of availability of testing. And then I do know the CDC is consulting, according to public knowledge, with a PR firm to try to streamline what you just read, by the way, which was a lot, even, even professionals is like, what the heck are they talking about? So I will refrain from, or I should say, I recommend just to hold off a little bit because February is going to be a lot different than what we have, we're going off of, what, January 7th? I think the CDC is going to bring something else down the pipe. And then this whole Omicron thing, they already publicly said, everybody's going to get it, but you don't know the difference between a common cold and Omicron. So the symptoms, again, can be common cold related, driving up the statistics, numbers, and we're shutting schools down, things like that, I just, it's a moving target. And I'll, I'll just say, let's hang on as long as we can.
Thank you for that. I would just reiterate, right now, when we're doing, when we're putting those numbers in there for a positive case, we're not using vaccines and we're not using home tests, we're only using actual tests. So to your point, if the statistics were odd, or people didn't know, it probably would raise the number up. I'm not saying it would, but it may. So we're only going with the choice. That being said, if you totally tested positive on a home test, we encourage you to get an actual test, and then we do quarantine, and we do follow those regulations, just to be, but we don't count that, and then this moves towards shutting, letting the health department know whether or not we're going to shut down, or if this went through, we would not be counting that home test as it stands right now as part of that 4% that would initiate a mask at this children's age. All right, your questions?
Have you had any discussion on how you may handle some of the families that choose not to comply with the mask requirement if that said building would move back towards it? And I'll give you an example, I've had one family approach me, and, and listen, these are all alleged until they're proven, right? But I had one family that had a concern that, that their child wasn't masking so that they were kind of segregated, segregated from the rest of the class and moved into a private area in an office in a building. And I guess have you had any new discussion about how you might address families that, that might not want to comply?
Honestly, that was one of my largest concerns that I brought up to the committee in part, because if this is a local policy, and I'll get into what the statement is that and why we try to do what we did to the best of our knowledge and setting, if this is a local policy that we are going to enforce, that the order was to go through, I think that you would have to give us some guidance if you asked on what we are willing to do about that. The state, when it came out from the health department, and I might even miss totally the bit, originally said that we could wouldn't comply, try to use the escalation techniques and talk to the parents. So that was the advice given, that's what we tried to do. Those were, their words, pretty close, not mine. So to answer your question, that is what we did. We did try to say, create those votes in the room, ask them to wear masks, which we had to try to supervise, this takes us to the best of our ability, which is challenging on the short, you know, short staff. And we did try to communicate to parents that at that given time, it was, you know, mandated, and I know there was a lot of different opinions, as I know administrators and folks tried to be respectful because everyone just battled with their opinion on that. And so that's what we tried to do, so I guess this is kind of local control, and that's the decision that he wants to go with. It doesn't go smoothly, and, but we would try to, as we always do, operate with a sense of, you know, professionalism and just try to explain it to people that this is local control, this is what the board decided, and this is how we're handling. I personally would be opposed to giving any discipline for that, at least unless, you know, obviously, if a student or somebody was disrespectful, but if they were just unwilling to wear it for their beliefs, a respectful man, I would think that we would try to follow that same protocol, because I think unless you direct me otherwise, it would be difficult to discipline somebody for that. I mean, that would be my thing. That being said, I will air concerns as I do with the committee, and order publicly to all of you. I do have concerns also with those folks having, you know, adequate supervision and if you try to keep it in line with these students that chose to not do that, because sometimes their parents do kind of pick them up, sometimes they do not, sometimes they can't for a variety of reasons, et cetera. So I'm cautious on that, and I need to make sure that you hear that from me publicly because that is a concern.
Dr. Pescarel, and I wanted to be honest and transparent with everybody in the room that I, I was the vote that abstained for the masking, only for the reason that I wanted to get some feedback from Solicitor Turnbull on what we can do to maybe alleviate as far as the families that don't want to comply with the masking. I was hesitant to commit until I can get a, and that in no way means that I don't believe that the suggestions that were made are not for the safety of the kids, because I most certainly do, but I, I felt a little more, and I expressed this to, you know, to everybody on the committee, that I, I just felt like we needed a little confirmation from the solicitor on proceeding on, on that subject as well. And I also had concerns a little bit, and I didn't think of this yesterday, Kelly, so I apologize, but, you know, if- yesterday, Kelly, so I apologize, but, you know, if masking at events, you know, if we get to that point, as far as athletics and activities in the building, I didn't think of that till today, so I apologize for not bringing that up yesterday, but that was another thought that I had as well.
On that point, just what I would take in front of you, is when there was previous masking, obviously, it didn't occur in cafeteria students reading, as I was, but it also didn't occur the most recent one. Didn't occur at sporting events, or when there's physical activities, such as physical education, so.
Let me clarify that. I mean attendees to, you know, to events, and I apologize, I should have clarified that. Those were just some thoughts, that's not me saying, you know, I think that that's what it should or should not be, if it's not the consensus of the board, but those were just a couple of things that I thought of.
My take on that would be, if it was in the building, and they had a mask, and there's...
That's what I assumed, but, you know, I just wanted to get the feelings of the rest of the board to see before we do actually decide if we'll be voting on a change.
To be honest, I did not think, if I was in the same situation you are after this call of safety meeting, I did not think about either until last night.
Yeah.
So definitely something, I mean, my assumption would be the same, that we would go back to how it was when it was a state mandate.
Right.
But that would be my assumption on that one.
So I think, you know, in that motion that we have up there, maybe we could, you know, make a note, Mr. King, Mrs. May, that, you know, on the motion, it would say that, you know, the masking would go back to the way it was the most recent.
Yeah, instructional areas only.
So instructional areas only, but it would pertain that, if you decided, since then, you should put that in, it would pertain to guests at athletic events, but not to physical activity in the lunchroom, in that room.
Thank you.
Anything else that you're trying to say? So I guess we just need to know, on this point tonight, whether or not we would like to add these, any or all of these motions to the agenda, as stated with that little extract that you just discussed about cafeteria, physical education, sporting events, guests at all of this.
So I think first, I would like to, can I ask that now? I would ask that we adjourn, not now, but at the end of the meeting, to executive session, to have a little bit more discussion about this.
On legal, to receive legal advice about some of those questions.
Yeah.
I apologize for that, guys, but thank you.
If that's okay to do that. And then, secondly, as far as the agenda, I would motion to add it to the agenda as a voting item, just because it was brought to us from a committee. And then, you know, we can certainly have discussion, there can be discussion without adding it to the meet and discuss agenda tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there can be public discussion on the matter tonight. You would also have a time to discuss it on next week's meeting, at the voting meeting, and then we would have, you know, the legal time period tonight to be able to discuss that. So I can make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Cephas?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just one last thing. Was there anyone else on that? Okay. So one last thing before we close my report, I would just like to, I know they're gone now, but I'd like to thank the students who came to share in the pledge of allegiance. That was awesome. And I'd also like to thank the art students and staff for their work on the Hall of Honor, and encourage everyone to take a look on their way out. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the Solicitor's report.
Just one brief item. It's not every night that the Solicitor gets a shout-out during public comment, and although noted and appreciated, in this instance, it was tied to some concerns about board members and board members qualifications. Without infringing or speaking to any of the opinion or legal components in terms of outside advice, I do want it to make it clear to the public and to those present that there are no known legal prohibitions for any member of the board to be sitting up here with us tonight and sharing their time and their talents with us. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
It is now time for all of new business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Amherst School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once.
Hello, Grand District, I'm here. I was going to fill out the questionnaire, because I still need to know who's going to be shared with the platform, who else? Is that going to go by my name, my address, my email address, all that, all my personal beliefs basically on that? No, but you know, some of them. And I just want to know, like, who all has to, well, that would show to a third party. Like, I want to know who is going, who's I going to see that? I was, I found it odd, and I'm curious as to why, and sometimes the group way that they were, because it's just odd that there were some that were singly group, you know, one item, and then others. My point is about that, it just kind of a false conclusion on what people are interested in, and what they're not interested in. So I don't know if you can corroborate that. In regards to the metal detectors, I'm going to make a conversation. Where do I view, as a parent, the statistics on how effective those that we have are in the high school? Meaning, is there numbers on what we find in there? As far as I know, all I ever hear about being found in there is fishing boats left in there accidentally, because kids use their backpacks to, for things like that, and they just, they depend. I never hear anyone finally, like, I just don't hear that. I just don't. So where can we get the data on that to see that these are even effective? And furthermore, if someone is that intense on a harp, what's stopping them from going to the cafeteria at night? What's stopping them from going into the little shop and getting a weapon? What's stopping them from doing that in the pencil? There's weapons everywhere. There's, we have this false security need for false security, and I understand, I get it, I don't want to just be sick, I get it, but I don't want to just dump any money into things that are going to really help them visit. I don't know. Lastly, if someone can get a little bit of community, I would like to see about being one of the sort of things, something like that. And I just will leave you with a question. Does anyone ever consider or think that possibly, I'm not saying either word, does anyone ever think that it's possible that unvaccinated people have health concerns about being in the presence of vaccinated people? Spike proteins are a real thing. If you have, if you're being compromised, you're catching a disease from someone passed their spike proteins from vaccination. It's a real thing. Especially if you're, by default, which most of America is, just consider where we may make new classes of people. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Do you, can you guys, as far as you can see the survey?
Well, I believe the survey, at this given point, it's going to come in and collect the data to, you know, technology and administration, technology department, basically, that works for the school district. There's no outside agency doing that. And then, they have access to everything like we all do, and are to keep that confidential. And then, from there, the reports that are going to be shared out from there would be shared, in particular, as I understand it, with the board first. And then, from there, if we wanted to share any of those findings, and that was the board's discretion, then we would probably share out some of the findings from that.
And those would be more of, like, the overarching data, I would assume.
Yeah, so for example, if we think back to when we had some time ago, when we were asking, you know, who was in favor of hybrid, or virtual, or those types of things, when we got that information from folks, I believe, and then, when we shared out, we surely didn't share out exactly what people did. We did more on percentages. You know, 80% would prefer this to 20%. So.
It's really exciting. I never saw those numbers. Where was that released? Because I waited for that information, and I never saw.
So as to your question about the kind of questions on the survey, I don't, I'm not exactly sure, so if I'm answering this wrong, I apologize. But a lot of the questions were written for a yes/no, and then there's like a follow-up question that is a voluntary, if you want to answer it, you can, you don't have to, you could just stick to the yes/no mandatory questions. So is that, I mean, I don't, we don't have to, like, we can talk afterwards, but that's not what you're asking. Okay. As far as the metal detectors, the question about that, I do have an answer.
So, I mean, I guess the question basically was, how do we get the statistics on the number of weapons found in the metal detectors? The only thing I could say about that is, we would have to look into, if that's the direction of the board, you know, in a year, how many weapons were found, and I don't know what the, that would be the statistic you'd be looking for, how many weapons were found on cause of that. I mean, we wouldn't want to, obviously, who and what and where is confidential, we wouldn't want to discuss that. So we have to think about how we would be able to do that without, you know, keeping everyone's.
Like a tally board, like knives checked, palms checked, I mean, any, put it, any of, just simple like that, simple, I just remember.
Even to back up a little bit on that, isn't the metal detector a deterrent? You really don't want to find anything.
Our hope would be, they leave.
Our goal would be to hope that there's nothing on that list, that we didn't find anything. So the metal detector is a deterrent to bring anything into the school district.
I mean, that's the goal.
You can go on the PA Future Index website and go to our district safe school report, and it'll have all the statistics you want about that.
If I can add, just really quick, and thank you for your question, by the way, it's reasonable to think that the shooting in Michigan would have been prevented if there was a metal detector that would have sensed, and picked up on that pistol in that kid's backpack, that he, you know, after he left the principal's office, he went into the bathroom, pulled it out, came out, and shot and killed other people's kids, metal detector would have caught that. I don't care about a statistic board for that. We got to be right all the time. We can't be right not once, or we're going to lose people's kids, and my own. So, yeah, it's a deterrent, for sure.
If it goes through the middle.
It's up to us to make sure that happens.
There's no way to get it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I mean.
All right, I hear you. I hear you. I just wanted to point that out to you. And also, I don't, I don't know if you noticed, but if you have a dashboard of weapons, of what's been found in the school district, I don't know what that would do to.
An idea board.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how much help that would do to the community and rural state, all of that.
It doesn't do much when we don't, when there's no certification.
Sure, sure, sure.
So, and so, as a mom, if I knew there was a weapon, I'd go, oh my gosh, if there was an Uzi in school, okay, and I'm running to the school, you know, like, I'm a mom, I'm going to protect my kid, you know, that's what I hear. When I find out that it's a little fish scaler, I mean, that's not necessarily a stroke on people.
So I think, as far as time goes, like, it's been three minutes of time at this point. I didn't want to leave your question unanswered about the committees. That is one of the reasons why we decided to put name and address, not address, but your phone or contact information. So if you are interested in committees, of course, you can come up and talk to us afterwards, but you could also respond to one of the questions on the response, or about committees, so either way is fine. Any other public comment?
Hello, I'm Esteban Gerbridge. I reside at 2623 Golden Road, and I would be honored to mention, and I do want to congratulate the board members, by the way. So in regards to what Desiree was talking about, the metal detectors, to some extent, they do recur. It does present a sense of false security. Not that people are completely addressed as to do anything, but it does, it really comes back to what goes on in the home, cultural rights, and that's totally what I'm drawn, and I'm very into a former school teacher, a senior teacher, for years, mostly, you know, it's a group for now, but he was a school teacher. So I empathize with the school teachers, and also with few board members. But the other thing that I want to comment on is what Dr. Gerbridge was talking about, with the masks, or PCR tests, and all of that. PCR tests are not a great way to test a virus. I have a daughter, she's almost 21, since the month to now, we deliver her autoimmune condition. I bring this up because child, any individual who has autoimmune condition, depending on how many rotations they do of that PCR, they're going to find something. So they're going to get a false positive test result. So I don't know how many students in this school, in this district have issues, but we send them to get a PCR test because neither our state legislators are pathetic, neither our county government, again, also pathetic, have come up with how many rotations are we going to do on this PCR test for COVID. So whenever I take my daughter, get tested, get into a PCR, or other issues, there's a set number of rotations. And so, when that rotation is hit, nothing is shown, she's negative, but it shows that she's positive with a PCR. There is no number of rotation. So that is nothing, I would say, I wouldn't agree with a PCR. Then you talk about CDC, that is another joke, and mainly, if they don't, masks do not do anything. I know there is, again, this is another sense of security that you take masks, it's something that they don't. The math on how that PCR of the virus is so small, it's often for all your ass, by the way, it's not really doing anything. And Desiree was correct about the spike protein of the vaccines. Folks, before you even make any kind of decisions, get information from health experts. So I'm going to throw off Dr. Peter McCullough, Dr. Robert Malone, who is the inventor of the mRNA. Those are the ones researching, trying to reach out to, to get information before you make decisions, because in 2020, those folks who graduated, not that it's your fault necessarily, it's maybe you weren't here, but you were responsible for making their lives miserable. And now we're going into 2021, 2022. I mean, how much more pressure we can, we put on these young people, and why should they not have a life? We've already lived a life, okay? We already have one quarter of a break, a little exaggerating, but they're just beginning their life. Please let them enjoy their life, and they will enjoy their life. I know you think those are sets of protecting their children. That's again, it's a false, let them live. My maiden name is Esteban Gerbridge, but my maiden name is Esteban Cholrenso. I bring that up because I'm first generation American. What does that mean? That means, when I went to school, I had to learn English. Italian is my first language. And my family lives in Buenos Aires, okay? So wait up there, that's where we're going to. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, just to part of your comment, I just wanted to make a comment back real quick about the graduates of the 2020 class. Certainly, I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody, but, I mean, our hearts break for the students that had to go through that time period. It was, it handled them awful. This, at least from my understanding from the Health and Safety Committee meeting, is in order to keep the kids in school as much as possible, because we know what the detrimental factors were, having them out of school, not, you know, again, there were many choices at that time, but that is kind of what that, the idea around that, at least from the committee meeting, from my understanding from being in that committee meeting. So I just wanted you to be aware that that's, you know, the intention is to keep the kids here in the building. you know, the intention is to keep the kids here in the building. So. Any other public comment?
Mrs. Varmasco, can I just respond as far as the graduation? I, I'll speak as a seasoned board member along with Mrs. Kehoe, that personally, those were some of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make in my life for these kids. Prayed a lot over it, struggled a lot with it. But in, in the end, you do what you think is very best to serve the kids of this district. And I had a lot of sleepless nights, I'm sure, along with Mrs. Kehoe and other people that served on the board, in trying to come to terms with decisions and what's best for the kids. And I also have a son, just so you, this is the first time I've seen you at a meeting, so you may not know this, but I, I have a child that has both an autoimmune and severe, severe health issues. And I've had, you know, he's, he's had COVID testing for one reason or another. And he, I've never had, I've never had a positive test come back on him, just, just sharing that with you from, from a mother to another mother. But I hope you realize, I think everybody's seated on this board. We're trying, we're trying our very best to do what we can to keep everybody safe. Opinions will differ for, for us and for the public on masking, not masking, and what's best for the kids. But I hope you see that, that, you know, everybody's intentions are what they are exactly. And we'll do our best to serve the kids and make the decisions that we hopefully feel will be for the, for the betterment of the kids. And, and our staff, and anybody entering our buildings, for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the voting meeting and reconvene the meet and discuss. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Sorry, I'm still getting clear on everything.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The meet and discuss board meeting of the Ambiduary School District is held on Wednesday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting is being held to review the agenda for the regular monthly board meeting that will be held Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. in the high school cafeteria. Okay.
Do we go to, we'll usually announce the notice, I'm sorry.
This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in, in part or in its entirety on the district website without the express permission of meeting participants.
There hasn't been a change in attendance, so we'll stand by the roll call.
There hasn't been a change in attendance, so we'll stand by the roll call taken earlier. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Okay. And we already had our teacher, student teacher recognition and presentations. So at this time, we still do public comment, correct? If anybody would, do I need to read it? Okay. Since we've already read the public comment part, I'll, I'll skip that part. But if there's anybody else that wants to speak on any of the agenda items that are on this meet and discuss board meeting agenda, you're more than welcome to come forward now. There's, this is the meet and discuss agenda. The others, take one.
Hi, Brady Dawson from Ambry. Just a question, item five on the agenda. Where does that money go that has been given? Does it go into the general school district budget earmarked for those departments? Or is because?
Can you say under which committee? I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
Item five, under gifts in kind.
Finance and budget. Thank you.
Finance and budget. So, I mean, when I asked the band director, are you aware that you were given free hydrant loads? He knows nothing about this. So that's my question. Where does it go?
I mean, I think I appreciate that comment. You know, for the most part, the way I understand most gifts and kind that are given, I'm not exactly sure what code. I could refer to the business manager on that. But most of them do just get accepted into the school district. That's who's giving them. That's, that's typically what happens on, on a gift in kind that I'm aware of. To your point of, in other words, I think, I don't want to say anything you didn't say yet, but, well, do we have that ability to spend that money or what have you? You know, sometimes there are, there have been times where if it's earmarked or something, or, you know, you do that. But otherwise, sometimes it does just go to the general fund. I don't know if you have anything, as the business manager, you different than that?
No, I, I agree with what Dr. Peskow said.
So I think we just get those and they come into that, that, that fund. As far as, you know, looking for expenses or something that you'd like to use the money for, if there's something needed, not you personally, I know that. I mean, like, the band in general, since they were the ones that performed. I mean, if there was, if there was something that they needed, I would just say that, you know, they could request that. But in large part, when we get gift and kind, there's no guarantee that that money just necessarily goes to, for example, a booster or anything like that.
And that's basically what I'm asking, as the president, since it is a gift of kind that you put in your general fund, but earmark it for something that they may need. They may need some sort of piece of equipment, you know, and then they can request it up against that line, I hope, that was given to them for their performance.
So not to go back and forth too much, and not to, when this has happened before, and I might be saying this a little wrong, and maybe, you know, the business manager could take a look into it, Director of Finance, and you can email her and get back to you. But I know there are some times where, you know, we can't earmark those forever. They can't go across audit years, those types of things. When the money comes in, it just kind of counts as revenue. What I always say is, you know, if there is something that they were looking for, you know, around that cost, then that could be something that could be considered and still approved by administration to purchase. But in large part, if I remember correctly, and I don't want to be quoted on it, sometimes it is frowned upon to like, hold it there and say that money's gonna go year after year after year. That's from previous districts, not necessarily here. So usually that comes in and that just ends up being, you budget for a certain amount of gifts and kinds, which is usually really low, because you never know if you're really gonna get those, and scholarships and those kind of things. So sometimes this might show that we were six hundred over. And there might be a time where, whether it is in the band supplies or something like that, that we're, we're over on that. You know what I mean? So if there's something specific that, you know, the band would be looking for in this fiscal year, I would say that they could reach out to the administration and that could be considered. I hope I tried to answer your question.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment, too, on that. It says the J R O T C was there, too. So if you're gonna probably, they would get something, too, I would say. Not just whoever, you know, if you go down that route. Personally, I think in the past that I, if I remember, any donations went into the general fund.
And that's what we're saying. So the only thing, I'm not, I, I don't believe that you earmarked it specifically for anything. It just goes into the general fund. That being said, as a mental note, if there was something that they were looking for around that cost, it could be considered. That's kind of what I'm saying.
Any other public comment on agenda items? All right, seeing as none, we'll move on to committee reports. Education and Technology, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Number one this evening, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three proposed school calendar. It is recommended to accept the calendar for the year twenty-two, twenty-three as presented. Did I miss that in my packet? Was there one sent to all of us? I mean, I'm sorry.
Your email?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I saw that. But is there a paper one here this evening?
Oh, no, I haven't seen a paper one.
Probably not. I apologize. Do you want a copy of it? We could have one made.
There was something around, a couple days off, I wanted to look at, but.
I have one you could look at. I, I, I don't typically, you know, use a laptop just for my vision, but.
Thank you.
It was on me.
As long as there are no changes from what was sent out in email, correct? There, yeah, there, there were no changes in what was sent out yesterday?
Correct. Thank you. That was the one thing I wanted to see him. Thank you. So was there any other discussion about number one, school calendar? Number two, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials Annual Conference. It is recommended that Ms. Ith be approved to attend the PASVO Annual Conference at Hershey, March eighth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. The conference has a lineup of educational sessions that will address critical school finance issues. The registration fee for Ms. Ith is attend, to attend is paid for by scholarship that is received. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for reaching out to find that scholarship to attend that.
Got so lucky that I was picked.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, the Pittsburgh Technology Articulation Agreement. It is recommended to approve an articulation agreement between Ambiduary School District and the Pittsburgh Technology College to provide secondary students with a continuum of education without unnecessary duplication of instruction. Is there any discussion on that? Moving on, number four, Boy Scouts of America Den Leaders. It is recommended to approve the Boy Scouts of America Den Leaders to come in and give prepared-for-life lessons to our high school students, pending receipt of their, of course, clearances, satisfactory drug screening, T B testing, and response from current former employees of the Act one sixty-eight as applicable. Any discussion on that? I had a question. Will that be offered to all high school stu, I mean, I know, all high school students?
It's primarily focused on our.
All ages?
Our special education.
Okay.
Life skills. It's kind of geared to that in particular.
Got it. Thank you. Any other discussion?
What are the prepared-for-life lessons? Do we have a little more information on them?
Dr. Filipowski, do you want to share a little bit about what you're familiar with?
Yeah, so it's daily living skills. So they would learn how to navigate communities. It could be, it could be a number of things. So depending on the lesson, it could be cooking, it could be how to repair things, how to build things, anything that they would need outside of, you know, the irregular academics, but to function in life as, as a citizen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Is that to start this year? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Moving on to number five, technology purchase. It is recommended to authorize the purchase of twenty-nine new technology equipment and licenses, laptops at an approximate cost of eighteen thousand, five hundred, seven dollars and eighty cents via the state contracted pricing through direct purchase for our high school students with disabilities, to give them more accessibility through technology. This will be paid for by the ESRS and its grant at no cost to the district. Is there any discussion on that? Moving on to number six, which is a student agreement. It's recommended to ratify the discipline agreement for student listed, relevant to a middle school student, effective January seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Can't really have any discussion. Anyone have a question? And then number seven would also be a student agreement, also a middle school student, effective January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Under Finance and Budget, Mr. Carpenter?
Madam President, number one, school district monthly bills and salaries. It's recommended that the monthly school district bills in the amount of two point seven one six, five ninety-six, point forty-six, and the monthly school district personnel's salaries in the amount of one point two six seven, nine thirty-one, point sixty-two be paid. Any discussion on that? Number two, cafeteria monthly bills and salaries at the listed amounts. Recommended that the cafeteria bills be paid, fifty thousand, three thirty-five, sixty-two, fifty-two thousand, two forty-eight, ninety-two in personnel salaries. Number three, twenty twenty, twenty-one final auditor's report. It's recommended to accept the final auditor's report for that year. Any discussion? Number four, proposed preliminary budget. It's recommended that the admin be directed to have a proposed preliminary budget available for public inspection by January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And further, the administration take all steps necessary to apply for Act One exceptions, including making the preliminary budget available, making all submissions to the P A Department of Education in compliance with all advertising requirements, including giving notice as required by Act One of the district's intention to adopt a budget that includes exceptions and publishing notice of intent to file for those exceptions. Any questions, discussion?
I did have a comment. So I just wanted to make sure that it's clear for all of you that basically by approving this, it is allowing the district to seek exceptions to go above the index. By no means does that mean that you have to do that. However, most all of my years, I do strongly recommend that you at least attempt to get that. This is a very preliminary budget, even on revenues and expenditures will change, that's for sure, both ways. But what it does is kind of look at a general picture of what you had in there last year, plus or minus a little bit the best that you could give at that given point, which usually shows that you would be above the amount on an unbalanced budget. If the D tax is to make up that millage. And if that millage is increased enough, then you can apply for, to go above the index, to see if you can get any exceptions. So you don't know whether or not you will even receive those exceptions, but you wouldn't know if you don't apply for them. My recommendation is this, that you go ahead and approve this preliminary budget as it goes through and give us permission to, to post this. The actual voting on that will most likely be at the first February meeting. We'll have to take action then, just so you know. So that will be on the voting. But as I said before, even what you're voting on there is just a preliminary budget. You will find out whether or not you have the right to get any exceptions or whether you don't. And you'll know then a little better picture of what the index is. Then we'll progress through the rest of that timeline, having a budget meeting sometime. Usually we do that prior to our board meeting, just for the sake of, a lot of community is liable to be aware of it and they already have that night planned. And we'll share where we were at, continue through those draft processes. And hopefully, we'd have to get it done by June thirtieth, with some other timetables in between there that will be reviewed at that presentation. But I often look to try to get it done in May, if possible, or very, or in the earlier June. It's just something that I think, you know, you might as well get the work done. Plus, it gives you a little bit of time in case there's any final questions. So again, the point of my discussion here mainly is to tell you that by doing this, you're, you're really just keeping your options as wide open as you can, not saying that at this point you will do it. Any questions you could be on that?
I have one question. When you said to take action by the first meeting in February, you mean take action on this specific?
Preliminary.
Preliminary, but okay.
You will have to do it. In other words, to meet the timelines, you won't be able to wait till the second meeting. This will be posted. You'll have to vote at the first meeting in February, so.
But if it's voted on next week, that takes care of that, or something else?
This is just asking you for us to post it.
Oh, okay.
And to advertise that it's going to be posted and such. And then you'll actually have to vote on the preliminary personally in February, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you for perfect clarification.
For sure.
Very good. Any further discussion? Number five, gifts in kind. It's recommended to accept the donation from the Beaver County Committee for the Veterans Day Parade with appreciation. The donor has received no goods or services in return for this gift. The donation was in the amount of three hundred dollars to each of the following for their participation in the two thousand twenty-one Veterans Day Parade. Ambry High School Marching Band, Ambry High School M C J R O T C. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Keever?
I have no items to discuss tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Zachi?
There is one item to discuss, an overnight tournament participation request by the Boys High School varsity volleyball team to attend a tournament at Northeastern High School in Manchester, P A, the night April second. I'm sorry, the tournament is April second. The overnight would be the first. Questions? Thank you.
I, I have a question. Have there been any discussions about costs related to that trip yet, or? trip yet, or? So we're just approving, we're approving the night, but.
They could do that, usually the costs are, you know, do not, as far as that goes, do not fall on the, the school district, as far as like hotels and those types of things, but I could double check that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zachi, public relations, Mrs. Witsko?
I have no items to discuss tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, steerings and rules, steering and rules, Mrs. Kehoe?
I have no new policy to regulate.
Thank you, legislative, Mr. Seepis?
No new legislatives, Madam President.
Thank you. It is now time for old and new business again, so if anybody would like to bring any other concerns, since we've already read that, I won't read it again, but anybody else who has any public comment regarding agenda or non-agenda items, maybe come forward this time. Seeing that, the Sunshine Law stands as previously announced, so I have a motion to adjourn and
And go to executive session.
Reconvene executive session?
Selma.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those? Meeting adjourned.